Gentlemen, it is seven o'clock, so we're going to go ahead and call this meeting to order tonight. I'll ask everyone to stand. We'll have the Reverend Perry lead us in prayer, and then we will do our pledge of allegiance immediately following. Mr. Perry?
First prayer. Father, we thank you for this day. This is the day that you have made for us and for the rest of the day as well as tonight. We will be glad and rejoice in it. Father, we thank you for all that you do for our great United States of America, for our city, for our country. And Father, we ask your blessings upon this meeting as we gather together to conduct business, to make this first city of Alma better. Bless everyone who has taken time out of the busy schedule to come out tonight. And as always, may this meeting be conducted decently and in order. In Jesus's name I pray, amen.
You please face the flag and salute our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May be seated. Wayne, will you do roll call, please?
Senator. James. John. Here. Jerry. Here. Dennis. Here. Nikki. Thank you.
On your agenda, we have the minutes from our last council meeting, our June council meeting. Everyone should have a copy. I would entertain a motion to waive the reading of the minutes, and if there are no questions, adopt as written.
Move to waive the reading of the minutes.
We have a motion by Mr. Ware. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by James McGee.
All in favor? Any opposed?
On committee reports, we have none. Citizens' forum, nobody has turned in anything. Mr. Wilson?
I'd like to waive it afterwards, later in the meeting, answer the memorial, the head coming in.
Okay, a motion to amend the agenda and move the citizens' forum down to the right before department head reports.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. In old business, there was a final plat for the project on Column Lane. It was included in your pack. Everyone should have had a diagram of that project. I think you just turned it, Gary.
Shaun, where'd you see that?
There you go. And it just needs to be...
Motion to accept public spaces?
Yes.
A move to accept the public spaces in Column Lane 3, final plat.
Second by Mr. Wakefield. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? At this time, I would also like to... The council to entertain a motion to amend the agenda removing item D. Resolution 2020-10. D, as in David?
Move to remove Resolution 2020-10.
We have a motion from Mr. Ware. Do we have a second? A second from Mr. Wakefield?
Can you give a quick explanation on that?
You want me to?
Well, in case some folks may not have agenda.
Sure. So the Resolution 2020-10, that was a resolution that we were going to discuss this evening. That dealt with masks in public. Since the governor passed a directive on that very issue today, there is no need for this resolution or any need to discuss it.
Please, the governor, all in favor? Any opposed?
Next piece of business is Resolution 20-07. We need a motion to bring that to the table.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
You're going to have to give me just a second so I can get to it, all right. Can't lick your fingers, you can't turn the pages. Resolution 2020-7, this is a resolution where I am asking you to approve this so that we can move forward with the... Oh, hang on, one sec, I got ahead of myself. This is one-half cent sales tax. Resolution 2020-7, this is just showing that we are supporting the one-half cent sales tax, the state sales tax that is due to sunset in 2023. There's going to be a question on the ballot this year in November to do away with the sunset and extend that tax, make it a permanent tax. This is a tax that's divided. Seventy percent of that goes to the state, fifteen percent goes to counties, and fifteen percent is divided and distributed among cities. For us, if we... If this tax was to go away, we would lose a significant amount of money in our street department, about half of our operating budget with this.
Move to adopt Resolution 2020-7, a resolution by the City of Alma, Arkansas, supporting the House Joint Resolution 1018 of 2019.
Second by Mr. McGee.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Now, we need a motion to bring Resolution 2020-8 to the table, please.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 2020-8, this is a resolution expressing the willingness of the City of Alma to partner with the Arkansas Department of Transportation for the following projects, which are listed on your resolution. So what this is, and everyone has a diagram that was put in front of them, the stretch of road that continues from Fayetteville Avenue and runs to 162, or what is known as Marshall Woolley Drive. The Kanter Bridge has been in discussion for a while to be replaced. The problem was, they did not have planned on putting sidewalks on that bridge. And as we tried to continue out our bike and pedestrian plan, that was going to be a major obstacle for us. And that would cost us, again, well over a million dollars to be able to put curb gutter sidewalks and then a pedestrian bridge separate from the Kanter Bridge. So as you know, there had been a proposal for them to bring the entire stretch of 64B up to city standards with curb gutter and sidewalks. They estimated the cost to be somewhere around eight and a half million dollars, and they refused. And this had really kind of morphed back into, they were just going to put the bridge up, and they were going to be done with it. But we, myself, Mr. Yardley, we started working on some of those relationships with the Arkansas Department of Transportation again. We started getting some more dialogue. And now then, what I propose to you is that what this resolution states is that the state will now bring that section of road from Fayetteville to 162 that includes the Kanter Bridge with curb gutter, sidewalks on both sides of the road, and a new bridge that also has pedestrian crossing across that bridge. And they are committed to helping us with the drainage problem, which is right there around where we're going to be building the new Crisello Park. Water likes to stand there, it ends up being a moat a lot of times during the course of the year. And they are committed to helping us with that issue, which could, again, very easily run into a substantial amount of money. And so they will do that, and what we will do in return is then take 64B into our inventory. And by doing that, that also now gives us control of the right-of-way around the park areas and around... Well, just the park area right now. And which is going to mean a lot moving on down the road, because we all know sometimes what it's like having to try to get permission to work in a right-of-way for R.D.O. Are there any questions? I would entertain a motion to... We have a motion for Mr. Wakefield, a second for Mr. Perry. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. All right, this is next up. The one that I was excited about. Need a motion to bring Resolution 2020-9 to the table, please.
So moved. Please read in its entirety.
Yes, sir. All in favor? Any opposed? Resolution number 2020-9, a resolution naming the Alma tennis courts the Tony McMurray Memorial Courts. Whereas Tony spent his entire teaching career with the Alma School District, which means he has better taste than his brother. Whereas Tony served as a social studies department chairman. And whereas Tony was a regional coordinator for the National History Day. And whereas Tony was the director of the Alma School District, FCA. And whereas Tony was known as the voice of the Alma Aridels. And whereas Tony was the high school boys and girls tennis coach for 27 years. And whereas, most importantly, Tony McMurray invested daily in the lives of the young people in Alma. And whereas the relationships that Tony built and the conversations that he had with Alma students and players will carry on forever. This is something that has been in the works for quite some time now. And this isn't just a resolution that names the courts. We're also in the process of resurfacing and redoing the courts and putting up new nets, new wind screens that will bear his name, and a plaque that we will install for the courts. And before I continue reading this, I would ask Coach Locke, do you want to speak? I ask you to step up to the mic.
I would just like to say on behalf of the Alma School District that it is an honor, it's been an honor to be able to work with Mayor Martin and the City of Alma on this project, the ability to resurface the courts, to do all the things that we're going to do to the facility with the work of the city for the school district, with what we do with our tennis team here, and is also with what happens with the community, having a community-wide tennis court. As Mayor Martin said, you know, Tony was a 35-year teacher here. And, you know, in my short time here, just a head coach, number one, I knew Tony as a friend, but I also worked with him in the coaching circuit, knew him as a teacher, knew him as a leader as our FCA. I had the ability to travel with him to numerous Razorback games with our FCA group and things like that. And I think it's just an honor to be able to commemorate the memory of Tony by renaming these courts and putting the very name on these courts where it will live forever in honor of the students that he was with and the teachers he's taught with and the athletes that he coached. So I think it's a very nice gesture, and it's great that this is going to be the Tony McMurray Memorial Tennis Courts.
Move to adopt Resolution 2020-9.
All in favor? Any opposed?
2020-9 has passed. And I would also give this time to, if there was anybody else that would like to say anything, speak about the courts. T-Mac?
So Mr. McMurray was obviously a social studies teacher in high school and tennis coach back in the late 90s. And when this first came out, you know, we live in an environment now where we have to be cautious naming things after anyone. But I feel comfortable, the stature that Mr. McMurray had in this community will live forever.
Now, I'm going to finish reading the rest of this resolution right quick. Since it's been passed, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of Alma, Arkansas that the Alma tennis courts located at 114 East Column Lane will now and forever be named and known as the Tony McMurray Memorial Tennis Courts. And as soon as we have the official resolution signed and sealed, we will pass that on so that you will have one for yourself as well. And thank you. Next on the agenda is ordinance 2020-6. Need a motion to bring it to the table?
So moved.
Second by Ms. Kilpatrick. All in favor? Roll call, roll call, please.
Nikki.
Yes.
Ed. Jerry. Yes. John. Yes. James. Yes. Senator.
Yes.
Entertain a motion to waive the three readings and read by title only.
So moved. Second.
Second by Mr. Ware.
Senator.
Yes.
James. Yes. John.
Yes.
Jerry.
Yes.
Ed. Yes. Nikki.
Yes.
Ordinance 2020-6, an ordinance to waive competitive bidding for emergency repair of the city wastewater collection system. This is now open for discussion. Mr. Yardley, is there anything that you want to say?
No, this is the collapsed line that we discussed last month in the... Well, earlier this month, the workshop, and we just need to get a repair in the process of waiving the bidding to get this done.
Open for discussion? Questions? Motion to adopt?
So moved. Second.
Second by Mr. Ware.
Nikki.
Yes.
Ed. Yes. Jerry.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
James. Senator.
Yes.
Ordinance number 2020-6 has passed. There was... Yes, there is an emergency clause. "As actually being necessary for the prevention of the public peace, health, and safety, the emergency is therefore declared to exist, and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after the passage of this approval."
I move to adopt emergency clause.
We have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Wakefield.
Senator.
Yes.
James. Yes. John.
Yes.
Jerry.
Yes.
Ed. Yes. Nikki.
Yes.
Next on the agenda is ordinance number 2020-07. Entertain a motion to bring this to the table.
So moved. Second.
Second by Mr. Perry.
Senator.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
Jerry.
Yes.
Ed. Yes.
A motion to read this by title only and waive the three readings?
So moved.
Second. Nikki.
Yes.
Ed. Yes. Jerry.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Ordinance number 2020-07, this is an ordinance replacing Alma ordinance number 81-15. This is the ordinance that deals with the rules and regulations of our parks, of our city parks. We... The one thing that I wanted to point out that was a little bit different than what was discussed in a study session is Section 1. And after speaking with the city attorney, we were afraid that if we started trying to list the hours of each individual park, because there will be some that will be different than others, it would...
Is it Section 3, correct? I think you said Section 8.
Oh, Section 3, that's correct, I'm sorry. When I talked about it, it was Section 1, he changed it. We... But Section 3, the hours of operations, instead of listing those for each facility, since they'll be different, we were afraid it would muddy up the ordinance. So what this is asking and saying is that those hours will be set by a mayor's proclamation for each facility. Of course, that will always be on the blessing of the council and after discussion with you. But in doing it this way, also, if we ever have to change something, then we can do that without having to amend the ordinance. This is something that we're needing to do for a lot of different reasons. We need to get some signs made up. We've had signs that are faded and you can't see. We have signs that say park hours are different than what the ordinance actually says right now. And we're going to use this as a tool to start trying to curtail some of the vandalism that we are experiencing. So it'll give us a mechanism.
You mentioned signs, I guess I'll make a motion to amend Section 3 to read "The hours of operations for public spaces is defined, and this ordinance shall be set by mayor's proclamation and posted publicly at the entrance of each park." That is subject to ours.
Sure.
Where there's no question.
Okay.
I guess, would that help? Or is Jeff... Would that help you, Jeff?
Yeah, and that was the intent anyway, was to be able to get the hours posted in front, you know, at each location.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
On number 7, shouldn't that refer to the police officers? I mean, you know, that shouldn't exclude the police officers or law enforcement on number 7.
Well, that's going to be a Shaun question, but I don't believe that that does. You know, no firearms permitted in...
No firearms at all, so that excludes the police?
We can, I can add that if you want that clarification. I think it would... I don't think it'd be an issue. If you want that clarification, we can do that.
Well, I just wanted to just... It's pretty straight, none whatsoever. I didn't know. That's what I was asking, should we add?
That's really up to y'all, so at this point, yes. So in theory, if you had a law enforcement officer from another jurisdiction, it could be causing gray area or questions. It wouldn't apply to your on-duty officers who are out working.
Okay.
John, you read a motion. James, do we have a second on John's motion?
Should we vote on that first?
Yeah. We need it. John made a motion to amend Section 3. "The hours of operations for public spaces, as defined in this ordinance, shall be set by mayor's proclamation and posted at each location."
I'll second John's motion.
Senator.
Yes.
The issue is the astronomy part.
Yep.
John?
Yes. Ed. Yes.
Yes.
And then the... Mr. McGee brought up Section number 7 that says no firearms. James, are you... Do you want to make a motion to change or...
I think it ought to exclude, you know, off-duty officers. I mean, it ought to... That would include off-duty officers, but it should specifically say any law enforcement. I don't know how you would want to...
Before you make that motion, I think it's important, maybe the answer is to table this and take it up in a study session, but at the moment, I do not believe that we prohibit concealed carry holders from carrying in a city facility.
That would potentially have implications.
And so this is stepping beyond what we currently allow in other public spaces in the city. So I would make a motion to table ordinance 2020-7 for further discussion.
I second.
I think this, you see what I'm saying, this is stepping beyond what we're currently allowing in other...
No, and that's the reason we wanted to do this, because this language that's here right now is actually in the current ordinance. So that's why we're doing this. If we're going to update it, let's make sure that we get it right.
So currently, I believe Arkansas concealed carry license holders can carry in public spaces unless prohibited by ordinance.
And then there's, I think there's also some distinction on whether you have the enhanced concealed carry as well.
Correct, yes, 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 yes. So let's talk about this some more.
Okay, so we have a second to table? James, you have the table?
Sorry.
James?
Yeah.
John?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Ed? Yes. Nikki?
Yes.
All right. Next on the agenda is going to be city hall personnel at this point.
Look it up. Maybe make a motion to amend the agenda once more and move public comment of head of item G. The reason being, I expect probably an executive session for item G, city hall personnel, so that would give anyone a chance to speak while everyone is here, because I assume, once everyone has to leave for the executive session, some may not come back.
Okay. We have a second to amend the agenda one more time, and go ahead and go to citizens' forum. We have a second. All right, citizens' forum.
Glad to give them something to comment on, but today's events have changed that. So we now have a mandate from the state concerning mask-wearing. They talk of enforcement of wearing the mask. So I'm interested in the city's plan on enforcement of non-compliance on the masks. I'm asking the city leaders, what is your intent? Have you thought about this? I know you've known that this has been coming. You've tried to institute it, you've gone to plan on doing it yourself. What is your plan for enforcement? Who are you going to be pressuring?
You know, for me, I didn't see this one coming from the governor. You know, I didn't, and honestly, I haven't even had a chance to read through it yet. I have no idea what it says. I didn't see the governor today, I haven't seen the directive that he's put out.
Okay, well, it's here now, and plans are made in advance. So do y'all have a plan? Each individual here, the leader of this, one of the leaders of this city, representing us, the citizens, which I don't recall any conversation from any of you other than yesterday from the mayor about any of this. Representation, where is it? Y'all sitting up here doing what? Are we going to get run over? Are you planning on protecting us? Your duties as city council leaders of this community is what? In your mind, what is it? Are you going to stand up for us, or are you just going to sit up here and do nothing? Because there's going to be more than me who declined to wear a mask. So are we going to get the hard end from the law enforcement, or what? I mean, I can tell you right now, there's going to be plenty of people who peaceably resist, whatever you want to call it. And there's lines that get drawn, and people cross lines. And we don't always know where people's lines are. people's lines are, but as leaders of this community, you better be thinking. So, but none of you have given an answer whatsoever of my question. Do any of you, have you ever, have you thought about it, any of you?
Yep, so I'll, I'll touch on this. I know, you know, we, we discussed a resolution in lieu of an ordinance, um, and I, I brought that forward, 'cause I, I didn't feel like our community was, was ready, uh, for the ordinance that the municipal league proposed. Uh, now that took me by surprise, 'cause I did not see, I did not anticipate the governor's actions today with the mandate that begins on, on July 20th, and I saw the bullet points of that, and I think the first offense is a, a warning, a verbal warning or written warning. Uh, anyway, we can get into that, but, uh, being that that just came down today from the state, you know, I'd be happy to add this to our next study session, uh, to, to take up, you know, how, how our city and how our law enforcement, uh, plans to enforce this. Um, you know, it's like any other law, I think that, you know, there, we only have so much manpower, so, you know, there are ordinances that we have that aren't enforced, um, for one reason or another, um, but I do think that it, it's worthy of, of taking this up for further discussion on how, how our city plans to, to respond to this.
That's right, because this is our town, this is not Little Rock, this is not the rest of the state. We govern our city. So let's all remember that, and let's step up and do that.
So Wayne, could you add that to our agenda for the next study session?
Yes, sir.
Um, and that would be in addition to the, to the, uh, ordinance 2020-7.
Yes. Yeah, we, um, you know, again, that, that, that took me by surprise today, and, uh, after I found out, and I didn't find out until like four o'clock this afternoon, I, I hollered at Chief Pointer and, and, and told him we're gonna sit down with our city attorney and, uh, start discussions on what this means, haven't even had a chance to look at it yet, so, um, we, we, we really don't know anything about it. And, and we won't, we can't make any decisions until we actually get the directive from the, from the governor, clarification on everything. All right.
So we tend to plan on August 3rd, study session, stack that up.
August 3rd, yes, six o'clock.
Should we have that in public, probably? If we can use this setting, is that possible?
Um, I don't know why it couldn't be, I mean, you know...
May I turn the air conditioner down a little?
They've been on all day, too. They got off, okay, well, we'll, we'll work on getting the study session set up for August 3rd. Um, all right, so, uh, anybody else in citizens' forum?
Uh, when was the study session set up?
Uh, we typically reserve it.
I just asked if somebody can contact me and let me know if they are due before we...
August 3rd at 6:00 PM.
Here?
Uh, we're, that's what we're gonna try to do. It may be booked, so we've gotta look and see, I, I don't have the, the booking for this place. Um, so I, I, that's the only reason I'm hesitating, I don't wanna step out there and, and say yes, and then come to find out this is booked, and then you're gonna be mad at me, 'cause I, I lied.
I, I agree.
So, we, uh, but this, that, that is what we, our intent is, August 3rd here. All right. None others? All right. Uh, next on the agenda then is gonna be city hall personnel.
So I, uh, no, Leslie, we need to discuss anything. I would probably would like to make a motion to, uh, enter executive session, um, to discuss personnel issues, uh, with, uh, each of the, um, folks that are resigning from the mayor's office individually, uh, before we come back as a group.
Hold the paper. Take your phones.
What's up? Are y'all doing it here? You getting us out, or y'all got a room, or?
Is there another room?
Um, there is not another room in here.
You have to kick everybody out?
We use the kitchen, is it?
No. Uh, you can still hear everything that's going on in here, so... All right, this time, we'll have to ask, we're gonna go to executive session, everyone will have to, uh, leave. Do you want Wayne and Destiny at the same time, or individually?
I think we have separate...
Yeah, okay, that's what I thought, so, yeah.
You can, you can hit your immediate supervisor and head of the...
Say that again, I'm sorry.
We need a motion come out of executive session.
I usually do it, it's not strictly in the card, but you make sure these are in record.
Make sure Anderson's good.
Anderson, you good? Alright, so a motion was made to come out of executive session by Mr. Perry, seconded by Mr. Wakefield, what was the time?
Nine oh eight.
Nine oh eight. You got that, Wayne? Good? Mr. Wakefield, seconded. Alright. Now then, we will continue, we have our department head reports and we will begin with Chief Wakefield.
Executive Council, during the month of June, we had one structural fire, one call of gas leak, and two four-vehicle accidents, last vehicle fires. As y'all probably see very well, we tried to do our annual burn As y'all probably see very well, we tried to do our annual burn of the Lake Alma Dam prior to the fireworks display, but the rain started just about the time we lit it, so we didn't do a very good job burning it this year. I would, I would like to ask your permission for something. Traditionally, all of our fire gear, all of our fire gear that we wear is called turnout gear, coats, pants, suits, gloves, helmets, has an expiration date on it. And we're, we're gonna be approaching that expiration date here in another year or two. Traditionally in the past, we've gone back to the voters on a bond issue and bought fifty or sixty thousand dollars worth of gear for my thirty guys. We wanna start a new plan, kinda like our pagers, we used to do the same thing with our pagers, we buy thirty new pagers at a time, and we buy them every few years. We went to a program where we buy four or five a year, till we get everybody's replenished and stuff. So, we wanna start the same thing with our turnout gear, probably replacing five or six sets a year, until we get everybody replaced. And then it's gonna start all over, by the time we get the new, you know, last guys equipped with new gear, we'll be starting with the guys we first started with, with new gear. So what I'd like to do is get permission to spend, I haven't got all my quotes in on this yet, but I would like to spend up to twenty thousand dollars of the eight thirty-three money, it's already there, it's not gonna come out of budget, to start replacing five, however many sets we can buy for under twenty thousand dollars. If y'all are okay with that.
I think that's a great plan, we obviously do the same thing with police vehicles and other things in the city to get, make sure those are, in rotation to be replaced, so we're not replacing everything at the same time.
I'm getting tired of having to go back to the citizens every few years, they have, I need all this money. And this is something, we're still gonna probably have to do, maybe on a smaller scale this next time, but this is something I think we can get into rotation, we've got about twenty-something thousand coming in this year on eight thirty-three money. So it's pretty much gonna be a wash, so if we can keep that up every year, we won't lose any money in our eight thirty-three account. And we can get everybody equipped, but it's gonna be a four or five-year process to get everybody down.
I think that's a good concept.
Do we, I'm gonna make a motion to do that.
Do we have a second?
Second.
A second from where? All in favor? Abstained. Mr. Wakefield?
That's all I have.
Alright, anybody have any questions for Chief? Alright, we'll move on, next up is the report from Mr. Pointer, who has been chasing bears for two days. Grabbing a look at bears.
Chief, I hope you got your short report.
So, I think I probably should be able to get through this in about a couple hours. Now, I know you're retired and you're already going home, it's like the, so, I'm gonna make this pretty short. As the mayor mentioned about the bear, I'm sure you've seen on social media or the news, there was a small bear running around town the last week or so. It was apprehended by the game of fish, we assisted the game of fish in doing that, so the bear has been removed from the city, so. The, it's kinda the July third fireworks show went very well for us. I had concerns about it, and I was concerned about the park being packed, and I was wrong. There was very few people in the park, and even throughout town, they, there was a lot of people, but they all seemed to be social distancing themselves very well, and so that's an attaboy for the citizens. Coming up, just so y'all know, on July the twenty-eighth, from noon till six here in this building, is the boots and badges. Y'all need to, since the fire chief didn't mention that, then y'all need to vote for the pleats on that, so.
And three antibody testing.
Yes, and they are, they will also be doing the COVID-19 antibody testing as a part of that, so. The organizer for the Blood Institute has said their, the ones they've had so far, they've had record-breaking numbers, so they are encouraging everyone to make an appointment. And you can do that online, or you can do it by calling Randy Mahn's office. I'm sorry? Yeah? That's 'cause the fireman cheat, though. So, I know, I know John's asked for this to be on the August study session, but just very briefly, because of the mayor's mandate on the mask going into effect Monday, I'm just gonna very briefly kinda tell you my approach to this, I'm sorry?
The governor's.
The, I'm sorry, the governor's mandate. So, this, this is kinda like the ordinance he was putting out that, that, he was telling cities that they can adopt, but there is enforcement on this. However, the enforcement is not really enforcement. This encourages the city or law enforcement to enforce it. It doesn't say that we have to, it encourages them to. And there's, there's several different restrictions on that, as far as first time being a warning. And then also, a law enforcement officer can't detain, arrest, or confine someone in jail for violating order. But this, and it includes this in here, that this shall not prohibit law enforcement officers or local officials from enforcing trespassing laws for private business owners. So, if, if someone's in Walmart not wearing a mask, and Walmart doesn't want them, they're wearing a mask, then we can, they can ask them to leave. And, and if they fail to do that, then we can remove them from the property, whether that's telling them to leave, or arresting them, taking them to jail. So, that's kinda gonna be our approach from the beginning, starting Monday, is we're not gonna go out and look for these violations. But if a business owner calls, and we have, they have someone there, and they want them wearing a mask, then we will either, they'll either put on a mask, or they can ask them to leave. So, just briefly on that, that's kind of our, gonna be our plan. And that's all I have, unless y'all have questions?
Any questions?
Court's back, going pretty soon.
Uh, court is going. It's, it's been running, normally about fifty percent of the people that's on the docket have been showing up. So it's still, I don't see the court picking up and catching up with where it was projected to be. And, and I don't do the revenue, you know, for the court that, you know, was transferred to the mayor at the beginning of the year, so as far as the revenue, I don't know where that's at, but we're still following the guidelines of the Arkansas Supreme Court while holding court, and that takes about three or four officers to do that. So, every week, we have three or four officers tied up for an hour or two for court, so.
Anyway. And, and I'm going to, since you asked that question, I also wanna make sure that the council knows, I continue to get lots of compliments on our court personnel and the police department, and Chief Pointer, and how we are conducting business, and how all that's taking place. And so, again, it's, it's, sure makes my job a lot easier, knowing that those guys are doing such a great job, and we appreciate that very much. Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Chief. Alright, up next, Mr. Yardley, Public Works, Water Street.
Alright, first of all, I just wanted to tell you how much I appreciate you waiving the competitive bidding so that we can get the sewer main repaired that's been a trouble for us, so thank you for doing that. Just really wanted to, you've got a report there, the only thing I wanted to highlight was that the upcoming sidewalk construction project will have a bid opening on August the fifth at 2:00 PM in the city council room. And as you've already been told before, that includes Column Lane, Maple Shade, and a portion of Rudy Road, as well as North Mountain Grove near Column Lane, and East Main Street near the Boys and Girls Club. So, those are the projects that will be included in that, and we'll have a, after that bid opening, I'll try to send you all the information on how that came out, and as you know, that's a grant project, so the biggest portion of it will be paid for by the state, and the remainder will be paid for by the city. And, and at this point, we're projecting, for the grant portion of that, which is just Column, Maple, and Rudy, the city's participation in that is about a hundred thousand dollars. And, but the stuff that's on Mountain Grove and Main Street are one hundred percent city projects, so those won't be, those won't be funded. And, and I'm gonna just keep this short, unless y'all have any questions, that's all I was gonna share with you. Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Planning, Buddy will be back next week, I will tell you however, because we had a question in our study session about the storm water prevention plan, I think John, you asked about that. The plan was actually filed last year, 2019, and it still has some continuation that needs to be done with that. And I'll get an update from Buddy on exactly where we are when he comes back, but that has been filed.
Yeah, so I think a part of the plan, Mark, you might correct me if I'm wrong, but included some public outreach and some other things, I was just curious how COVID was impacting that, that process, or?
That's what we need to get with Buddy on, when he gets back. Yeah. And he'll be, he'll be back next week, and that's the top of the list, we've already discussed it, and we'll get after it. Parks, we have Cristello Park, you might start seeing some equipment showing up tomorrow. They're gonna have to go down and brush hog some area of the park and do some testing, do some digs. There, it's a go on construction, so they should start actually working on the park first part of next week is the plan. We, we did have a little bit of a holdup with paperwork coming back from the state, but we were able to get that this week. And, you know, we kinda got to a point where I wasn't comfortable moving forward, because there were some things that we were missing from the state, and I was just gonna feel a lot more comfortable having those before we moved on. And we have those, so we're good to go with Cristello Park. The bathrooms at, at the building here on the outside, I haven't been around to look at them yet, but we were having the door frames fixed, we had some vandalism over here, and so if they're not fixed yet, they will be very soon, but I think they may be fixed, which will be nice, those will be back in service. We had a baseball tournament over the weekend, again, this is something that's kind of, I think, exciting for our city, that this is another partnership between the city and the school district, and some other individuals that are running the baseball fields. The state tournament was in town, it went off without a hitch, it was perfect. They followed all the guidelines set forth by the ADH and the governor. People had a great time, we had no issues, no problems. We had some Alma teams that actually did really well in the tournament, too, so that was pretty exciting, and we're looking for more of that. It's, to me, I love the idea that we can see these kinds of events coming back into our city, and with that is some good tax revenue, and hopefully that'll be beneficial to our businesses as well. And we're about two weeks away from having the papers ready to go, all of the preliminary documents that we need for the bike trails, to get those submitted to the state, progressive trail design's been working on those, working on the design for the crossings that we're gonna need. And they, you know, the heat kinda slowed things down a little bit, and one of the crossings, there were some issues with, with what was originally proposed back in 2017 to what is really feasible. And so, they're working on that, but the last communication I had with them was they, they were gonna have all the paperwork ready to go here within the next couple of weeks. Again, exciting, because now then we can get that to the state, and once we get okay with them to move forward, we can get that out to bid. And, and then from there, hopefully, it wouldn't, I think we're looking at about eight to ten weeks on the actual trail build, so if we can just get it out to bid, you know, get it going, we'll be good. And that's pretty much it on the parks, that's all I have, anybody have any questions? Good? Oh, Popeye Park, one other thing, Popeye Park, we were having a problem with the, with the water system over there, the irrigation system, and so we've had somebody come in, they've reworked the irrigation, we, you know, the heads weren't coming up over the bushes, the bushes had grown up tall enough now, the boxwoods, that it was just spraying straight into the boxwoods, which isn't good, 'cause it will disease them, and we had some that were starting to look a little sick, and grass wasn't growing like it was. And we had heads that weren't even working, so we have all that fixed, they've redesigned the system, they've actually ran some irrigation now to the potted plants that are around there, so, you know, it's, you know, we have a lot of investment in that park, we wanna keep it looking nice. And, and so anyway, we're just about finished with, with that project also. We'll move on, general fund. Everyone has a copy of the financial report, this is through the month of June. If you look at the balance ledger, actually not in too bad a shape, we, we have a nice cushion so far for, for this year. The state has revised its forecast again, and to the better. Right now, it doesn't look like things were gonna hit and be as impactful as what we were fearful of back in March, and, you know, at that time, I came to you and I told you that, you know, the projections for us weren't, weren't good. Now, that doesn't mean that, even though it's looking better, that doesn't mean that we, we still don't have some issues, and we, somebody asked about the courts a while ago, and everybody should have the latest courts document in front of you, and to date, for this year, we're eighty-three thousand nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars, roughly twenty-eight if you round up. That is seventy-five thousand eight hundred and thirty-two dollars less than where we were this time last year. So we, we have lost over seventy-five thousand dollars to date in the courts. Now, the good news to that is, is that this current period was actually about a thousand dollars more than what it was this time last year. So, June of 2019, that report was a thousand dollars less than what June of 2020 was. So, what I'm saying is, is maybe now we are gonna be back on track to where we thought we were gonna be.